Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, November 26th. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So are there any additions or changes to today's agenda? Any adjustments or changes?
I'm sure I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support to approve our agenda as written. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we have our public comment period. At this time, the public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of county concern. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Any members of the public that wish to speak? Have commissioners received any information to share? All right, we will close our public comment period and move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any items that a commissioner would like to pull? Seeing or hearing none, is Commissioner White?
I would just like to make certain, because we did not do it last time, but after we -- I'll make a motion to approve this, but before I do this, I want to make certain we verbally say what's on this, what we are approving.
Right, and I was intending to do that, because you brought that up before. So these agenda items include our claims minutes, the Superior Fall Trail Race Event Permit, another permit for the Gunflint Mail Run coming up in January, the approval of the hire of Paul Olin as our deputy sheriff, the resignation of Trista Long, who is our public safety telecommunicator and jailer, and the reappointment of Sue McGlaughlin to the Grand Murray Library. So we have a motion by Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on at this point to our review and discussion of the ARC memo, and we'll turn it over to Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. So I was able to reach out to Becky, the new director at ARC. Kathy Leinberger, who's in charge of NERC, has on leave right now, so I didn't connect with her, but she's been copied on all the emails going back and forth. So this is a new -- something they want to institute at NERC for those with opioid addictions. It only applies to the men at NERC. It does not apply to people at probation, because there is a different funding mechanism for anybody who is on probation. The other thing is, in this 2024, we've had no men at NERC. In 2023, we had two. In 2022, we had five. 2021, we had two. In 2020, we had one. We've had zero on medically assisted treatments in that timeframe. And this is what Becky wrote to me. As noted, there were none on mat drugs. They use a lot of acronyms there.
Medically assisted treatment.
Yes. If history is an indicator, Cook County should not see too many requests for payment of supplicate for NERC men, though it could happen. We would not think more than one every couple of years. That's the background. They are asking, since we did receive opioid funds, that we would say we would cover those costs if we have a resident at NERC. And I -- this will be voted on at our December 15th meeting, so I just need to get consensus from the board of how you want me to vote.
I would really support this. It has been indicated that the medication, although the cost is high per dose, is very effective, and I would support that if needed. Other commissioners? Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, my concern was just a matter -- if it was just a matter of convenience, but it sounds like it's a much more effective treatment. And also considering the, you know, cost, you know, I wanted to know more about that, so I really appreciate the further information. And I agree with Commissioner Sullivan that it would be a good -- a better way to go.
Commissioner White?
And so could you, maybe you couldn't, could you, in your layman's terms, or someone here, explain what this drug treatment is, how it is most effective?
I am not an expert on this, honest. If Attorney Hicken knows more, I would defer to her.
Madam Chair and Commissioner White, I'm happy to pontificate. I believe that this is a drug that will -- it works to reduce cravings for the drug of addiction. And it may also work to reduce the high once it's taken. And, you know, this is an injectable rather than a daily dose, and some see that as an improvement, because it doesn't require the daily decision to, you know, reduce that high effect and the daily decision to stay sober that day. I can also see administrative efficiencies by not having to daily administer that drug. So that's what I believe I know about it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And this is an FDA-approved drug?
Oh, I'm assuming so.
I agree that we should. I agree that we should do this.
Commissioner Starley?
I agree. We need to support you on that.
Thank you.
All right. So that will be approved at the December meeting?
Correct.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll move on at this point, then, to our Highway Department. And Engineer Haas is here to talk about the National Seaway Byway Program, a grant application, and potential letter of support coming from the Cook County Board.
Good morning.
Good morning. And thank you for keeping our roads clean and safe.
We're trying. It's something that's at least, we all know what to do. Go plow. Got it.
Excuse me, I'd like to interject. No one's plowed our roads.
I asked them not to. We'll get there. Yeah, so there's a program out. It's called the National Scenic Byway Program. And as you can probably guess from the title, funding for that goes towards infrastructure on national scenic byways. So for us specifically, the Gunflint Trail is that. There's a section of that road in particular, I've been particularly troubled finding funding for, you know, the end 10 miles of the Gunflint, we all know, rather bumpy, rather awful. It's actually some of the worst pavement in the county. I think we were able to find the last time it was resurfaced, oh, I might put my foot in my mouth, early 2000s, I think, late 90s, somewhere in there. So it's been a while, it's very, very due. And so this program's kind of neat, and so I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just read the abstract real quick, just so everybody knows. So, "Preserving accessibility to the Boundary Waters Canoe Area Wilderness on the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway aims to preserve and enhance accessibility to the BWCAW by improving key infrastructure along the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway, a critical access route for visitors and residents. The scope includes replacing aging and deteriorated culverts to ensure proper drainage, wetland connectivity, and prevent roadway flooding, which has been exacerbated by extreme weather events. Additionally, the project will resurface the end 10 miles of the byway to improve driving conditions, extend the lifespan of the roadway, and enhance safety for all users. National Scenic Byway Program monies will directly fund these improvements that will maintain the integrity and intrinsic qualities of the Gunflint Trail as a gateway to one of Minnesota's most treasured natural resources, ensuring continued access for recreation, tourism, and local communities while minimizing environmental impact. Through proactive infrastructure maintenance, the project will safeguard the area's economic vitality and preserve the region's natural beauty for future generations." And so I am here to ask for a letter of support to submit this application.
So I'd like to make just a couple of comments. This stretch of road has been discussed at length by the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Group, the Rainy River Vermilion River One Watershed One Plan. It has been brought up at Lake Association meetings, at SAG, Seagull, Gunflint, kind of the whole end of the trail. And I think this would be of great benefit to all the outfitters as well that are down there, so from a business perspective. So I would strongly encourage us as a board to consider this letter of support. I would be happy to write it and would be able to provide a lot of information based on the groups that I'm in, just because of it being in District 4. Other commissioner comments or remarks?
I don't see any reason why we would not write a letter of support, so I'd like to make a motion to write a letter of support for the grant application.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. What date would you like that letter by?
It's due, I believe, December 16th, and so preferably, I don't know, after Thanksgiving, maybe we can connect or something if you want to see. I have the application finished, and so now I'm just rounding up letters of support.
All right, very good. I'll connect with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on right now to Item 6, our Human Resources section, and we have our Director, Allison Plummer, coming forward to talk about an appointment for a county attorney. Good morning.
All right. First topic, my first item, is the appointment to fill the soon-to-be-vacated county attorney position. So following the resignation of our current county attorney, Molly Hicken, insert sad face emoji. It was determined, following state statute, to post the position to fill the vacancies. So statute allows the board to appoint someone to fill the remainder of the vacancy, currently filled and appointed to with county attorney Hicken. That term will end on December 31st, 2026. So following our recruitment selection policy as listed in our county handbook, going through that process, we had one applicant of which we interviewed, and that applicant was our current Assistant County Attorney 2, Jean Peterson. So I have, before we get to kind of what I'm requesting with approving her appointment, we invited Jean here today to speak in front of you all and to allow her to speak as to why she is uniquely qualified to fill this role. So invite Jean up here.
Good morning, Jean.
Good morning, Board. Madam Chair and Commissioners, good morning. I appear before you today with appreciation for and in support of the recommendation to approve my appointment as county attorney to fill the remainder of the term of Cook County Attorney Molly Hicken upon her resignation date of January 2nd, 2025. In the interview for this position, I was asked why the county board should select me as the next county attorney, and I respectfully offer my reworded response to the board as a whole today. I am uniquely qualified for this position. I held the Assistant County Attorney position pro temp or full-time from 2013 to 2017, and I made a joyful and committed return to the position in 2021. My time away from the office offered me insight into social services and the probation fields, and while this made me a more well-rounded employee, this time made me realize how much I missed the contributions I can offer individuals and the public, specifically from the county attorney's office. I have prosecuted criminal cases here from charging to decision to jury conviction to appeal. I have partnered with other agencies to work for the benefit of adult care and child protection. I have advised, I have worked with other jurisdictions toward efficient global resolution of cases where appropriate. I have advised other departments on a temporary basis during vacation or absence by the county attorney. I have attended trainings with a receptive mind and applied that knowledge to new best practices in the office. I have the experience to be an effective and proficient public servant in this position. Yet I am also humble enough to be excited to grow into this role. My predecessor served in this office for over 17 years and was on the forefront of the substance use recovery court and use of the restorative justice model for qualified offenses, in addition to her civil advising and her criminal and delinquency caseload. I am eager to learn, to earn the trust of the board and the community I serve with compassion, integrity, and transparency. And in my mind, just as importantly, I have a passion for this community. I grew up here. I chose to come back to this community and raise my children here, and I find service in, I find meaning in service to this community. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. And I'd just like to add a couple of comments, having served on the interview committee, your education, your private and public sector experiences, the variety of roles, adult service, social worker, probation officer, paralegal, crime victim, witness coordinator, the Assistant County Attorney, all of those give you a variety of perspectives, and I really do agree with you, it makes you uniquely qualified. I've also personally observed her very hard work in the attorney's office, and Sheriff Eliason mentioned that as well in the interview process, so I'd just like to share that with the rest of the board. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. Are you addressed as Jeannie or Jean?
It's funny, so my mother intended for me to be named Jean, but because I grew up here and you don't call a little girl Jean, everyone who I grew up with calls me Jeannie, and I don't hear a difference.
Okay. Either way, then.
Thank you.
So then we need to fill a position to assist her. So that's the next step, right?
That would be correct. If Jean is appointed today to the county attorney position, we would need to post the Assistant County Position. And just so you are aware, we should not hold our breath. There are currently 11 Assistant County Attorney Positions posted on AMC. Some of them have not had applications since last June. So we know that that could potentially be some additional workload for our current staff in the county attorney's office, but we would need to then post that position. Any other questions or remarks? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jean Peterson as county attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. And Allison?
Just something, if you could add this to the motion, Jean reminded me this morning, similar to the appointment that we did with Lee Flundy to the chief deputy position, is following Minnesota Statute 3.088, that Jean would also like to request a leave of absence from her current position into the appointed position, and she would be able then to request a return to her former position or similarly situated position at the end of the two-year term in which she's being appointed, depending on the outcome of an election and whatnot going into 2027.
Thank you. So would we like to amend the motion?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable amending that.
I like the idea of consistency, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Commissioner Starley, are you fine with that? All right. So with that amendment, we have a motion to request the appointment of Jean Peterson as our county attorney till December 31st of 2026, and then that would include a leave of absence, that she could return to her position in two years. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I have a question about that. I understand the intent, but if we, we just talked about hiring an assistant county. So how does that process work, then, if she chooses not to continue and run in an election and gets her old job back? What happens to that person that was hired for that job? Do we, are we going to come up with a plan now for that, or are we going to just increase our staffing in the attorney's office? How is that handled?
Yep, so it would be similar to the situation that Lee Flundy was requesting his leave of absence from too. Lee was filling the chief, or the deputy slash investigator position, so that came up to in terms of, will that position even be available when and if he does request a return to his former position, that leave of absence from that position. So similarly, if a position is no longer available, it's been filled, or the position has been abolished, that the statute allows that individual, if we have a similar position of like seniority status, pay, that potentially that individual, so Jean in this case, at the end of 2026, if she doesn't move or stay in that county attorney position, we would have to look and see what is available at that time. It doesn't guarantee placement, but we would try to put her back into a position of, again, similar seniority, similar pay, or potentially there's another position available that we would look at the recruitment and selection process for.
Commissioner White?
So what positions do we have that are at a similar pay level as the assistant attorney?
Not many. That's, yes, that's also a limitation.
He couldn't like be a sheriff, and she couldn't, you know. So I believe we need to have serious discussion or thought about that. Being consistent is one thing, but I can see where in law enforcement, we often seem to have a shortage of deputies, or they move, or we have, or crime, but it's, but I don't believe we should make this, I understand, what if she doesn't really like, Jeannie, and I'll call her Jeannie because your mom used to always call you Jeannie, and I knew you when. I was in this, so you're Jeannie, I'm sorry. The, I can understand, so it'll be a two-year trial if you like being, like being the county attorney, which I believe you probably would, I mean, just based on your seemingly sincere desire to be a public servant, and this is your community, and this is a wonderful thing to hear, it doesn't often happen. So we need to give it some thought. I would approve this today, but we need to have, not wait for two years to come up with what are we going to do, unless Pat Eliason decides he's not going to be a sheriff in two years, and then we'll slide you over there. So.
We can't slide anybody into an elected position, so I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Commissioner Mills?
So, I'm sorry, my interpretation of what Allison said was that there's no guarantee, and that if there's no position available, it's kind of, that's that. And similarly, if an elected official doesn't get elected, we don't just move into a similarly, you know, if there's no, you know, it's, and I don't foresee that happening, but it's a possibility, and also considering the demand for assistant county attorneys, it's maybe a good likelihood, who knows? But it's just, it's just a, as much insurance as we can provide.
Okay. I would agree with that.
May I respond briefly? So I just spoke about transparency, and in the interest of transparency, it is my intent to run in the election. This is what I see as a statutory safeguard, or like a protection to say, thank you for your investment in this community, and that the legislature has allowed, thank you for your investment in this community, and thank you for your investment in continued public service. If things don't go your way, we will see what we can do to hold a position for you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Board.
I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for coming before the board and sharing this information with the entire board at once. I think it's very important, especially for such an important position, so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Chair President.
All right. Allison, we'll move on to Item B, which is our pay table structure.
So this item is on the agenda now, requesting action. This is coming off of the conversation that we had at the Committee of the Whole Meeting last week on November 19th, in which Rowan and I, also joined by Tessa from DDA, to talk about our current pay table structure, the limitations currently that we are experiencing, encountering with our Job Description Review Process, primarily with focus on our leadership positions, as most of those are now coming up in the review queue, that we are encountering more compression and leadership positions falling below our desired pay philosophy in which we set out to correct with this Job Description Review Process. We're really experiencing issues in that 240 to 260 grade range. So just again, a little back information, is that we are looking at options of amending the pay table and adding a grade 270. So our Job Description Review Process, the classification system that we use is the Keystone, the Keystone, oh my gosh, I'm totally blanking, Keystone Matrix, the factoring system, Keystone Factoring System, too many words in my head. And that matrix that we are utilizing goes from a grade 100 up to a grade 270. And I think when, there was discussion at the Cow, that the last time that we were talking about implementing the changes in the pay table and adding that 270, I think it was determined at that time with the county administrator, to not add that 270 and to leave his grade as a 260. But now we are encountering issues with that position, the county administrator position, of which we will also be actively recruiting for, and the other leadership positions that fall right below and right near that, that we're coming into issues, being able to see movement, again, with the Job Description Review Process, and getting the positions where they are scoring on the matrix, which then aligns with pay, market pay, and bringing them in accordance with our pay philosophy, again, that we set out to implement and correct.
So one thing I'd like to comment on is, in the packet that the commissioners were given this morning, and we also got this electronically in advance, that on page one, which is really page two of the packet, that it does say that 7% to 10% is kind of the range between those upper grades. And so even if we were to go to a 7%, that's kind of on the low end of things. So that was something that I really noted when I looked at the information provided by Tessa.
And I can clarify, too, the information that's in your board packet. So from the Committee of the Whole Meeting, it was requested to get some figures, some calculations, on budgetary impacts of what these upper-level grade changes could be for the various options that we have in front of you today. Let me just clarify the different options. So option one would be to add and create that grade 270, but then modify the current spread at the top, and then with the addition of the 270, to change that top-tier spread from a 4% where it's currently at to 7%. So it would be modifying the spread currently between a 250 and a 260, changing that from a 4% to a 7%, and then the spread, adding the 270 between the 260 would also be a 7%. So the 7% would really be consistent throughout our pay grades. Option two would be to create and add that grade 270, but leave the spread between the 260 and the 270 similar to what the spread is between a 250 and a 260. I know lots of numbers, so just ask questions if you need something clarified. Leave that spread at a 4%. Option three would be to not add the 270. So again, we would stay, the top grade would be a 260, but to increase the spread between the top two grades, a 250 and a 260, change that from 4% to 7%. Or option four would be to do nothing and leave as is. So then, Tessa had provided the report, which is So then, Tessa had provided the report, which is pages, of the report, pages one through six, providing information that you had requested in terms of some initial budgetary figures and impacts. There's the pay table showing the different options, and then you had also asked about the number of employees sitting within each classification or grade, so that table is listed. But in talking with our leadership committee prior to this meeting, there were still some questions about the budgetary impact figures that Tessa had provided on page three. So yesterday, I worked on creating the spreadsheets that are attached as supplemental information, which include pay tables for 2024, so you have that visual, because there's probably going to be some impact just at the tail end of this year, and then all of 2025. And then I laid out different spreadsheets for the different options, showing the initial positions that we are foreseeing being impacted by these decisions, whether we add the 270 or not, what they're currently graded at, and then given the option, what they would move to, given how we move our positions, that decision with, if an employee goes through a grade increase, the practice is, and this is to be fair with all of the other positions that we've reviewed, that they go up the grade to whatever his point is directed to, and then they go back in steps, and will fall at the pay that's right above their current pay. So there'd be movement in that, so those, again, those figures that I included for the grade step, given those different options, reflect that practice. And I also do want to note that the county attorney position, because we are going to see turnover in that, starting with 2025, Molly, or excuse me, County Attorney Hicken right now, is at the top end of the scale, plus she's also receiving 7% longevity, so taking into account the impacts for 2025 of what Jean will get paid, we're actually going to see a decrease, we're going to be paying less in payroll to the county attorney. So those are the figures that you'll see in each of those options at the very end. If printed in color, they'd be red, but it's a, it's actually going to be a savings, so that actually counteracts the additional salary we could potentially pay with those options.
Thank you, you answered a question that I had, so appreciate that. Other questions for Allison?
Madam Chair. Thank you. I don't have a question, just a comment, because we're at a point in the county where we need to look at hiring an administrator. And I think if we can be more than fair in the wage, we probably will attract more people. So does that mean then we're looking at a 270, option one? Or would we be looking at 270, option two? There's, you know, a few dollars difference between the wages there. And we don't have a feel yet for what's out there. But besides the attraction of Cook County, besides the attraction of what we've been doing as a board, I don't want to have the pay look minimum to folks, too.
I guess I would agree with you, Commissioner Storley, and I know that we will likely have some competition for our county administrator position. As I understand, the city of Duluth is seeking a city administrator, so if somebody is attracted to this area, that will be competition for us, clearly. Other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I have a couple, I guess. So I'm concerned that this feels rushed, that we just learned about this last week, really, and this was, we've been going through this whole process for quite a while, and this is the first time that we've really discussed this. So I have concerns with that. I also want to ask, there's that labor management board that was meeting about negotiations, wondering, has it gone before that group? Is there a recommendation from our labor groups? Has it been discussed at all? No?
The LMC probably wouldn't be the place to have this discussion, it would probably be more at personnel, but that's just my knee jerk. What the LMC is more for is to bring up issues that the different unions are seeing or having regarding.
Just wondering if there's been discussion about the pay scale, the structure, and this compression issue that we're experiencing, if it's been discussed at the employee level? That's what I was wondering.
No, it has not. I mean, pay is a right of administration, so we have not brought this to any of the non-administrative level employees.
Okay, and that's, I wanted that background. My other concern about this just feeling rushed is, we don't even know what we want in an administrator yet. We just had our interviews yesterday. I was told this is going to be a process, and we won't have that information right away. And I just feel like we're, actually thought of this yesterday, you know, that story about 10 blind men feeling an elephant, and each thinking it was something else? And that's how I feel we're dealing with this process, is that we're piecemealing things together, and we don't have an overall vision of what we want and where we want to go. And I think that's where we need to start, is what do we want in an administrator? Is it necessary to, are we going to change this job description? Are we going to have different things? It makes no sense to me to score this with DDA if it really isn't what we're even looking for.
Commissioner Mills.
So my understanding from the interviews yesterday is that won't affect the job description? The job description is, is what we, are the duties and responsibilities of, of the administrator. Yesterday was more of what kind of qualities do we want in an administrator, and, and different aspects of either their personality, their experience, or their skills. But what we need is what's in the, the job description. And my, again, my understanding is that the recommendation from DDA is to create the 270 based on the job description, as well as just the limitations, having it at a 260, and that was the recommendation before, as well as just that, at that time, our administrator decided not to recommend doing that, because of the significant cost through the other adjustments in our, in our pay for the rest of the organization and employees, but also because the, the limitation that the 260 currently puts on the other staff, when those job descriptions are going through the process and should be up to that 260, they're not allowed because of pay equity and the administrator being there. So separate from a job description, the interviews, like I don't see that. And this is really a structural, it's, do we want to follow the structure that we've had in place, or are we going to cowboy it? Or, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of how I see things. And I do think we want to be competitive. I know it's a competitive market out there, and I want to be consistent with our pay structure, both for the fairness to other employees, department heads, but also to the incoming administrator. Like, I think it would be a disservice to that person to have an exception to our, our structure. I also was very concerned about cost. I'm thinking something might be switched around here, though. Option one and option two look like they might be flipped around, or am I?
They're not.
How could it be?
The number, yeah, the numbers. Rowan and I were talking about that yesterday, too. Yep.
So.
Yes, so tell me more.
Yeah, I'm thinking about the county attorney. How could it be that the 260 step, oh, I see. Yeah, 260 step eight in option one would be different than 260 step eight in option two.
Because option one represents the four, or excuse me, 7% spread, so there's a higher increase between the 260 and the 270, and then you have the step changes. It's, it's how the math works out on the table, but, so the one, the county attorney position, for example, looking at the, oh, wait, are you looking at the 25 rate? 22, 25?
Yeah, I was looking at the 25.
They're kind of, so they appear to be backwards. Rowan and I were looking at these yesterday.
Okay.
It's, but they're not. We've doubled, we've triple checked, because you would anticipate, sorry, my words were backwards, you would anticipate that the 7% would equate to a higher pay rate versus the 4%.
Right.
But it's, we've checked the math on the tables, and that's, I still haven't wrapped my head around it, yes.
So the, because of the policy, the spreadsheet that we're looking at here, the policy that we've had moves you up in a grade, but takes you back to the closest step of your existing pay. When you do those 4% spreads.
It's a different step.
There's a difference. And so, so we're not going to pay them less, but just the way that the math works out through the 4% steps, when you make a 4% crease on the, increase on the grade, it, in that scenario, it just ends up that the person is, is making more in a, in a less of an increase than they are. It's counterintuitive, why we, why we checked it out through four times yesterday, but it's just the way that, in the, in the 7% one, they land, the county attorney was the one you're looking at, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they, they land at 6173, whereas in the 4% spread increase and spread, they, they land at 62, because the one below that would be less than what they're currently making. So it's just slightly more, and it's just the way that the, our process is, that we put you at the step that's closest to your existing pay, but not less.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That is very counterintuitive, I'm following.
Thanks for explaining that. One thing I would like to point out is, our Keystone Matrix, we haven't had a 270, but we should have. And so I think it's really important that we correct the system, that we don't deviate from that, so regardless of any other discussion, four or 7%, I think it behooves us to go to a 270, so we're making that correction. I don't historically know why there wasn't a 270. I've tried to look back in board minutes from previous years, I can't find anything. Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I think, considering that our previous county attorney, or county administrator didn't want a 270, plays a factor here, doesn't it? I mean, he himself said, let's not do that.
It was purely financial. He said, I'm getting paid enough. That's what he said.
Okay, so.
But that was a sacrifice for the org, because otherwise it would just have, you know, been an additional cost, so.
I'm still very hesitant about doing this during this transition period without an administrator, without going through a process of talking about this whole thing, and I'm not a fan of the Keystone pay scale, and when you look at it compared to our comparative counties, too, we're an outlier. This is not a good system. It doesn't make sense, and it was put in by our previous administrator, and it was not implemented in a good way. So I would just think you may want to start all over.
I think it's really important that we come to a decision in a relatively short period of time, because we need to post this position and know what we're going to pay that person. We need to have a range, a salary range.
And reiterating what Commissioner Mills said, it's, this is not just impacting the county administrator position, this is impacting our other leaders, and not implementing a 270, again, will go against the goal that we set out to do when we hire DDA to do our job description review process. And then it will put a cap, an arbitrary cap, on our higher level positions, again, the, the handful of positions that are listed in here as potentially seeing movement. And then that is then treating them differently than we have allowed all of our other staff going through this review process. And to be able to freely be graded and judged according to this process, and they have all seen movement within their grades, we've seen a lot of movement within grades, and it's not our leaders' fault that the other positions have been reviewed and scored according to the matrix, and now they're going to pay for it by not being able to be adjusted. I, I would just really highly consider, it's not just the county administrator. I, I just, I would not support, condone unfair treatment, that's, that's, that's just not right. In terms of the Keystone Matrix, that wasn't created by Jeff Cadwell. That was the Keystone Matrix that Sato had used when he came in, what was that, 2017? When we did a kind of our first big job description review process? It's one of a handful of grading systems, as, as Tessa said during the COW meeting last week, what is there, like 20 systems that she utilizes? They all have pros and cons. I have, I'm used to using the Keystone system. I honestly don't think it's flawed. I think any system can be better, but I don't, I don't think it's a horrible system. And I would really hesitate to start over. That, that would be, that, that would be a pretty substantial burden and impact on our whole organization to go through this process again.
Absolutely. Commissioner White.
I'd like to agree with Commissioner Johnson. The process is being pushed, this was introduced, I mean, we talked about it at the committee of the whole, we had no time to actually discuss it at the committee of the whole, which would have been an ideal place to actually discuss this. And, and I get to look at the numbers here, and anyone listening to this conversation, if their eyes are not rolling in their head, they don't, I mean, if they're trying to understand what's being said, I think they would have had a hard time keeping up. And so I understand the need to make it more fair, equitable for our, for our leadership, for our department heads, for, for those people. But I do not see, again, the value in rushing something. We discussed, how will this impact hiring? Last, last week, we did have a chance to say, will this interfere with posting for the new, new leader or superintendent in that position? And I believe the statement was that in the conversation, like, what is the, if James were here today, what, what, we're, what would his, would we be, with the amount that he is receiving per hour, as it's on here, would that be the same that we are going to be offering a new person? Or if we added the 270 position, would it be a higher number? Does that entry level wage change because we're still at 260, but if we were at 270, would it be a higher number?
Not necessarily. So when James left, he was a 260 step nine, so he was at the highest wage, which would be 73, 7370. So even by adding a 270, the figures that, that I used on here, Tessa in her figures, and then I subsequently used it for the county administrator position, was a 270 step four. So potentially, and that base rate is, for 2025, would be 68, 69, which is already about $5 less per hour than what James was paid. So this, and we don't even have to start at a step four. I mean, even if you add a 270, the pay rate can still be at the low end. We could say we're starting at a step one, and still reduce the budgetary impacts, and that rate, again, will still be less than what James was paid when he left here.
So the point is, when interviewing potential candidates, or candidates for the position, we will not be stymied by the fact that we have not, at this moment in time, gone, gone to the 270 without full, full discussion and the ramifications. We have the numbers written here, but I believe the, the. have the numbers written here, but I believe the, the board is five members elected by the public, and we as a board should be able to have time to process this information and to absorb it. Uh. We don't, we don't even know how many pe- I mean, it, it's a shot in the dark as how many people might really want to come to Cook County and live here, uh, and be the county, the, the face of county government. Um, we don't know that, but if we will be able to offer them the same amount of money, whether or not we have switched up to two seventy another, or not, and I think the part of that is, do we do four percent, do we do seven percent, do, we have more than one option to consider, and that, I believe our full board should discuss the pros and cons of that. And it's not refuting what you say, Allison, it's not, it's just we have a responsibility to, to thoroughly understand and feel good about, or not feel good, but to have a discussion among all of us, all five of us, and your input is invaluable, but we need to be able to do that. So if we put this off, put this off until the next meeting in December.
Why don't we just discuss?
Next Tuesday.
Why don't we just discuss it now? Like, I don't understand what the, what is not understood. If, if we post the job now as a two sixty, there's a range, step one to step nine. That's the range for the salary range. If we post it as a two seventy, step one to step nine, that's a different salary range.
And is that what you just got done saying? If, if it's a two seventy, it's a different salary range?
It would be. The minimum and maximum would be different, but it, um, I mean, it really depends on if it's a four percent or seven percent that we would actually have more finite numbers. Um, but posting it at a two sixty with the current range, I think would, there would be some overlap with the, with the pay range that would, um, occur with a two seventy.
Just clarify to the question about if James were here, that the rate that James was being paid is well above the low end of what a two seventy at any option would be. And so if we were to have a two seventy with a four percent increase over two sixty or a seven percent over two sixty, we would, within that pay range, still have the ability to make an offer below what James was making.
Correct.
The upper end would go above what James was making.
And, and when we do the offer, the offer, it depends on what experience and skills the candidate brings to the table.
Correct.
Very much so.
And that's the decision that is made by the hiring, the group that actually reviews the candidates.
Exactly.
So Administrator Watkins. Do you feel there's? Four percent or seven percent? I mean, right now, right now, we are at, though, we sat here not so long ago, talking about the levy and like, oh, no, we're going to get it down. We'll get it down to seven. We'll get it down. Five would be nice. We set it at nine point something. We're now down to eight point something. We have how many things, how many meetings to go to get the levy down? I believe.
And this will impact the levy?
Yes, it will.
So I do think it's important for us to make a decision for a variety of reasons.
If I may, Ms. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would say, um, a couple of things in relation to two seventy, seven percent or four percent. I think some of the issues that we've had with the Keystone matrix have been self-imposed. We've, we've had a lot of conversations about one seventies and the transition that we saw after that and the need to do the corrections there. I see this as a very similar situation. Uh. Four percent versus seven percent, uh, as Chair Sullivan stated, the textbook information that we get from DDA shared is that seven to ten is the, is the normal range. Four percent would be below that. The other issue that I potentially see with that is amongst the grades that we have now, seven percent is pretty typical. The vast majority of increases as you move up are seven percent. And so from that perspective, the, in an ideal situation from my point of view, I think it should be standard across the whole matrix. I think we should have seven percent increases, and then based on those numbers, the board would have a much easier system to look at and understand, as well as talk about what those target percent salaries are that, that Allison referenced and, and make changes that way. But this kind of up and down of changes between grades, I think is, adds a level of complexity that I don't think is needed.
That's understandable. Commissioner Starley on the end, what's your input?
I'm at the end. I'm at the end of this.
By choice.
I think it's important to move at least that step to two seventy, um, in regards to, you know, a, a new hire, in regards to the folks who are already here with the different steps. And it isn't, it, it's not going to be like horrendously expensive. That's because we can vary all of that with a new hire. It's not going to be, you know, something that, um, we're going to affect the levy by millions of dollars. We aren't.
No, and I guess it's not the cost of the thing. I guess, again, it's back to the, the, this is complex, and I understand, I mean, if you have consistency in seven percent be- between the steps, and for those of the listening audience that can't see any of this, um, pretty much, uh, I can't find that page. Um. Seven percent is the norm for most of the, the dis- the distance between step one, step two, step three, um, or the.
The grades.
The grades. And so that makes sense to me. And since. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I want to hear more about the pros and cons of, instead of going to a two seventy, going with option three.
Then the only position that would, uh, potentially be impacted, depending on what option, if you wanted to do the option three, which would change that spread between a two fifty and a two sixty from that four percent to a seven percent, the only position that would impact would be the county administrator position. Um, I confirmed with Tessa that the other, uh, leadership positions will not move because you cannot create that compression at the very top, uh, against the county administrator position. So, again, we'd be creating an arbitrary cap on the other leader, leadership positions if we choose option three or option four.
Commissioner Mills?
Um, one of the things I appreciated in the analysis, too, was just, um, the other counties and the different grades they had, and our, the number of grades right now is the lowest from all of those counties. If we created the two seventy position, um, we'd still be the lowest, but only by one. Uh, we are a smaller organization than many counties, um, and so to me, that follows, attracts. Um. I think part of the intention of the system was the simplicity, too. And if you have many more grades, like, say, twenty-eight, that gets a lot more complex as well. And so I don't see it as, um, a disadvantage or, or a liability to have fewer, uh, grades. It's just kind of right size for the size of our organization. Um, doesn't, doesn't mean it's a bad system, just, just sort of smaller.
Commissioner Mills?
And you said there's currently job descriptions for department heads that are basically waiting on this.
They're being held.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
So I don't.
Including county engineer, county attorney.
Yeah, I don't see this as a rush. Um, it just seems like it follows the system. And, I mean, I understand that it's complex and that it can take time to understand things, but it's just following the same system. Um, and, you know, one of my concerns was the financial implications, and over time, that will grow. Um, right now, it'll save us money. Um, but I, I also hope that the administrator we hire is not a step one. I hope we get someone who has experience. Um, that's, that's something I'm rolling around my head, too, as far as the budget's concerned. Um, but this is, uh, it just seems pretty straightforward to me despite its complexity. The counterintuitive thing is what really threw me. Um, and that's part of that complexity, but it's just like, okay, follow the system. And we only have to make it as hard as we want to.
Mr. Starley? Thank you. Well, it seems like everything is coming here at once. It isn't. Allison has been working all year in upgrading all the steps, so we understand that along the way. Now, the only thing we're being asked is, do we want to go to step two seventy? That's what we're being asked.
Or go to a s- seven percent spread and, on two sixty, and I'm leaning that way. I mean, so I'm seeing that, we can do nothing, which probably is not a very good option, I will admit. But I'm torn between, uh, two and, option two and three. Um, or one and three, one, two, or three. Okay, but I'm leaning three, because I think this is a bigger issue. And I think it deserves more discussion. And I really hope you find a county administrator soon that understands this whole thing, and we are not just making arbitrary decisions, that we are having a thoughtful discussion about this whole pay structure. So that's where I'm leaning, three.
Can you explain why again?
I just think there's some issues that maybe need to be addressed, and maybe we'll, we had a county administrator who said, no, we should stop at two sixty.
No, he didn't, he didn't say that.
Um, well.
He said, I'm not gonna.
And, and it wasn't good for our organization then, or maybe not. I don't know.
It was just a dollar.
So I'm just saying, that was the advice of the county administrator, and we are getting, going to have a new county administrator, and I would just like to save that option saying, hey, what do you think? We agree. As a board, you've had a chance to talk that over with, I'm sorry, I know we have an interim, um, but I'm hoping we get somebody to sit in that chair with much more experience, like, I agree with you on that. Um, but I, that's a conversation I think that should be happening next. I'm willing to go up to, for the advertisement part, part of it. But, so that's why I'm leaning towards three.
And, and then you realize it holds the other jobs back.
Elected positions that they hired, yeah.
No, not elected positions.
Well, okay, engineer, he's only been in the job four years.
PHD test director.
It's, yeah, it's just unfair.
I just, I think we can wait. It doesn't need to be rushed yet. So you wait two months. You wait three months.
Do you just not want to make a decision, or what's?
I just think this is a big step, and we need, you need to have more time and not make it, everything feel so rushed. We need to do it today.
Again, I don't, I don't think this is rushed. It's just following the system. I feel like you're dragging, and I don't understand why.
Well, part of it is because I won't be sitting in this chair next month.
But you are now.
I am, and this is where I'm leaning personally. I have not spoken to my successor about this issue. But I do think, I have to think about the long-term implications of every vote I cast, and I'm concerned about the long-term implications when we've only had one week to even think about it and compare. I've been looking up other counties and what is their pay scale, and I know we need to make some adjustments. I admit that, which is why I'm leaning three right now. And we can always change it again. You can add it later. It doesn't have to be done today.
So given all the discussion I'm hearing and the information shared, both by DDA and, and Allison, um, I think it's important we stick to this Keystone system that we have in place, but we add a two seventy. That is the intent of this system. I think we shouldn't be deviating. And given that the range of other counties is that seven to ten percent, I would like to make a motion to add grade two seventy and increase the spread between two fifty, two sixty, and two seventy to seventy percent, seven percent.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion and support. Additional discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Thank you, Allison. That was a difficult discussion, but an important discussion that we had. We'll move on with item seven, which is our county attorney.
Thank you. Um, so, Madam Chair, the, first I have to give you, uh, an update as to timing, uh, because I have a, um, a hearing, a commitment hearing at ten o'clock, and so it's possible that the closed session item, uh, I won't be here for it unless it's rescheduled, so, um, but Stephanie Ball is expected to be here soon, I think, for that. So if you, if you wish to juggle things around.
I would recommend that we do that.
Yeah.
Because that is very, very critical. Um, so I'd like to recommend that we have a motion to go into closed session for our attorney update on the RSNH Airport runway extension.
Oh, she's not here yet, I don't believe, so we can't.
Okay.
Uh, what I'm suggesting is that, oh, no, she says she's outside in the hall.
Okay. All right.
All right, so moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills is there, support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We are going into closed session at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome back everyone to our Cook County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. We have been in closed session according to 13D .05 subdivision three for attorney-client privilege to discuss a dispute between Cook County and RSNH. We have taken no action and are returning now to our regular meeting, and we're going to return to our county attorney to discuss the law enforcement center renovation and expansion architect contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is the contract with RSNH to provide architectural services.
BKV.
I'm sorry, BKV. BKV, wow. To provide architectural services on the law enforcement center renovation and expansion. So, they identify a cost of work at just short of $6 million. Now, this is an estimate of the entire project's work, including construction, and it's the best estimate they can give now. It is not a guaranteed estimate. And this contract is limited to architectural services. You'll see, you know, that there are a lot of kind of blanks to be filled in still. On page three, for example, the all the design phase milestones and construction commencement date, et cetera, are still to be determined. That is, we would expect that at this point in the project because the plans are not finalized. That's what we're contracting for, is for them to finalize architectural plans. In preparation to finalize this document, we also spoke with BKV about engaging with a construction manager for this project, and we've identified at the recommendation of our facilities director, Brooke Lassard. We have prepared a contract for your approval next week with Johnson Wilson Construction for our construction management services. So, you can expect to see that agreement next week. So, I stand ready for any questions, hoping I can help answer them. Yes?
Commissioner Mills.
Can you, um, how was Johnson Wilson, do we, how was, how were they selected? How did Brooke select them?
Past experience that he has using Johnson Wilson on projects up at the hospital, is my understanding.
Also the construction manager at risk with North Shore Waste in that project.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions for Attorney Hickon?
Oh, one more?
No, I'm just, there are a lot of blanks, and I'm just confused about this whole thing. So, we are approving BKV to do architectural planning for that number that was at the very end, right?
Right, the last page.
Not to exceed 40,000.
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm just, there, I mean, there was a lot in here that was over my head.
It's like cut to the chase, yeah.
So, I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on.
Yes. So, the scope of the architect's basic services, you'll find in Article Three on page eight. And, and it's broken down, and I agree with you, these AIA contracts are very technical. There's a lot of technical language that's being used, but, I mean, the best description I can give you, you know, is just that we are hiring this architectural firm to run the project from the architectural services vantage point. They're, they're gonna kind of be the umbrella.
What was the name again? Because we've got advantage, we had these other things, and I didn't know. Who are, who are we doing this with?
BKV, which is also known as Borman Cruis Vogel Group.
So, okay.
So, we-
So, they are. Okay. That's why I'm confused. Like, why is there all these different names, and I only know BKV? All right, thank you.
Yep. So, it's the same group that commissioners have heard from, and that's been working on the two different projects on behalf of the county to date. And then, they've also named the different, like, engineers, a land surveyor that they're going to use, they've named our, the construction manager, the associate architect, the structural engineer, you know.
I just needed clarification, because it was very confusing for me. I'm just really slow at trying to do the chart of who's and who. Thank you.
Who's on first? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I know this can change that final total number, not the 40,000, not to exceed that, but the five mil, almost six million. Is that include the architectural services?
Yes, I think it does.
I assume so, but, okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract between Cook County and BKV for architectural services.
So, we have a motion. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Hickon.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, we'll move on right now to item eight, auditor treasure powers.
Madam Chair, could we move those two items around since we have guests here?
I think that would be very appropriate. As we know, our guests have been waiting for quite some time. So, let's move to item B, which is to renew the approval of the revolving loan fund to the Cook County Real Estate Fund.
Yeah, so, this is a request to approve a $250,000 loan to Cook County Real Estate Fund for their development of a 36-unit multi-family housing project, conditional on bank commitment, other funding source commitments, interest at market rate matching the bank loan for a term of 10 years, collateral, a second position on real estate, personal guarantees of the local general partners of the fund on condition of county attorney approval, satisfactory completion of borrower documents, personal guarantees, promissory note, and borrower agreements. And you've heard, not all of you, but you've heard all of this back in February, because we approved the same language back on February 27th. The project experienced some delays, and they were not able to take the loan in the 180 days, which is in our guidelines. So, that expired in, in August. So, we met the committee with them again on November 16th to review the project. The major delay was the shift of the planned underground parking. Didn't prove to be, it was more expensive and not as easy to do. So, they moved that, but that took a lot of time to make that move, the change in plans, the rebidding, the soil testing, et cetera, et cetera. So, it made a lot of sense to the committee. And they have 14 sources of funds. They were still working on that back in February, and to get all of the approvals has taken longer than expected. So, it made sense. We reviewed again at the committee their financial projections, and they look strong. In fact, their, you know, cash to loan ratios are good. I won't go into them, but banks are happy with their cash to loan and their projections. And they are still planning to make 18 of the units to be offered at 80% of the area median income, AMI, to help with affordability, and the other 18- median income, AMI, to help with affordability, and the other eighteen units are at market rates. So, it was a unanimous vote. Not everyone was there at the committee, but it was unanimous vote of those there who are able to vote, which, under a new guidelines, not the county attorney or the commissioner representative, Stacy Johnson, but the other four of us there voted unanimously. So, you've got Howard Hedstrom and Tim Kennedy here, who are very familiar with the project and involved, and if you have any other questions.
Any questions that commissioners have?
In my mind, this is just a renewal of a decision we already made. It was just a timing issue, so I would move to renew the loan.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, back to item A.
Back to item A. Again, you've heard this, because this was at the last meeting. So, this is our state and local fiscal recovery funds that we have to obligate by December thirty-first. One change in all this is another change that I wasn't even aware of. At the last meeting, you don't see any discussion here of interest. That's not required any longer. That was one of the other changes they made. They amended the program in 2021. So, we've been calculating that, but we don't need it. It's not required, so.
Can you explain more for what do you mean?
Oh, we thought that we had to, originally, to calculate the interest on money we hadn't spent, because there's a long time period, and that that money, any interest goes into part of the project, but it's not. It's not part of it.
So, you didn't have to calculate interest in twenty twenty-one?
We didn't have to, and we don't have, yeah, there, that would not be part of the project, so.
So, we should wait till the thirty-first?
I don't think so. But, so anyway, the numbers are a little bit different, because I don't have, they were inflated by the interest that we would have to spend. So, now we have three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand unspent instead of, we thought it was a couple hundred thousand more. So, the obligation, again, is either a contract with someone, or you could have a sub-agreement, like with the HRA, and as long as those are in place by December thirty-first. So, everything else is the same, as I described at the last meeting. So, you could put it towards the BKV contract, for example, because the allowance is broad enough now for that type of use. You could use it for the North Shore Waste Transfer Station Architectural Services, the two-hundred thousand, because that is something I think they're prepared, since we've already agreed to it, but to use our own funds right now. And the third option was to obligate to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority as a sub-recipient, and they've identified three areas that they could use help on. We'd have to have an agreement, and Jason is working on this with an attorney, just to have an agreement ready, so that you'd have that at possibly the next meeting if you decided to obligate some funds with them, so. So, you can have another meeting or two to think about it.
Well, I think we've had this on our, you know, radar since November twelfth, and have had time to think about it. In my mind, you know, two priorities that we have in our community are housing and the North Shore Waste, because it's the waste for everything in the county. And bonding is used for construction projects, and that's kind of what we had already thought about, design costs for the LAC being and, and bonding. The part with bonding I like is people that don't even live here yet will eventually have to pay for part of that project. They will move here and be paying taxes. So, I think bonding supports a good project completion, but preserves current budgets and minimizes the burden on taxpayers in an immediate sense, and then for other people in the future to pick up. So, my thought is, we take two-hundred thousand to cover the architectural services for the transfer station, and the remaining, which would be one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents, to go to our HRA for their three identified areas of need. Thoughts from other commissioners?
And the three, excuse me, Commissioner Sullivan, the three areas of need identified are the Norris Cogan.
Norris Cogan.
Norris Cogan, housing development, the energy, envelope and energy improvement plan, program, and to ensure that rents at eleven units of the Gunflint View apartments remain at sixty percent.
AMI, which is the average monthly income. Correct.
Yeah, and I think the reason he added that is, that was covered under, can't remember what it stands for, S A H, it's some state funding, but that got changed.
Right.
So, there's reduced state funding that they initially thought they had for that.
And I know in the HRA, Stacy and I have both, or Commissioner Johnson and I have both, you know, listened to the commissioners on the HRA talk about the importance of, and I think we would concur, continuing to provide that affordable housing at Gunflint View, that that's a priority.
So, we'll be subsidizing rents in a way.
I guess you could call it that.
Yeah.
But it's an opportunity for us.
We don't know what it'll be, but we're supporting it.
Correct. Commissioner Mills?
I don't have strong feelings about these options. My thoughts rationale are similar to yours, that we can bond for the, for the law enforcement center. It differs from yours, your thoughts a little bit with North Shore Waste. I feel like those fees can pay for that, as we've seen, and I know there's some changes there. My strongest thought and inkling is to support the sixty percent AMI exclusively. I think that would have the biggest bang for the buck for our community and those at need in our community, though the energy, envelope and energy improvement program, I think, is also very advantageous. But, but I do believe bang for buck is the sixty percent AMI. But, again, don't have very strong feelings. It's almost like a horse apiece, so I'm just happy to have this funded.
And we can designate those funds to the HRA and let Jason work on what that agreement would look like.
And the bonding explanation, we have already approved that.
Right.
And for future people, I mean, this goes to people that don't live here full-time also. It's people with second homes, that they also will be paying for that. I'm really supporting the North Shore Waste to help them with that, because I believe there might be more issues that appear that they are now unaware of and will need more financing for that.
And I felt that way as well, Commissioner White. I am the biggest proponent and champion of housing, and when I first looked at this, I, I thought, oh, I'd love to see that entire amount go to the HRA. And then, as I looked at North Shore Waste, the timeline that we're on, and thinking about possibilities, I started thinking a little bit differently about coming up with a balance.
And, and with our last conversation with North Shore Waste, with them thinking perhaps they could add a little bit more on and provide transfer station on the east and west end of the county for all waste from the households, that's an additional cost that is, that I think it's a really good improvement to their original plan, so.
Commissioner Johnson?
I just been looking back at my HRA notes about the, the shortage of funds because of the S A H A. Anyway, it, it looks like it, I had written down that, he'd said it's anywhere from a fifty to a seventy-five thousand dollar gap that is needed, because they didn't get as much from the S A-
Right.
-H A as, so that's where, and I'm, I agree. Any of the things that Jason suggested would be fine, but when you said only for that, I'm just saying, don't tie their-
We don't need all of it.
Don't tie their hands for that.
Understood.
Because they don't need it for that projects, could be for other ones, but just heads up on that.
Thank you. That's very helpful for, for my perspective.
Commissioner Starley, any thoughts?
Same thoughts.
Ask a clarifying question. Auditor Powers report, the, the interest that had been there, what becomes of that, and what is that?
It's just in our, in our fund balance.
Fund balance?
Yeah.
Did you say how much it was?
I don't recall. It was less. We didn't have this year's calculated yet, so.
Very good.
It wasn't.
Thank you.
It was just a calculation to this date.
Sure.
From twenty twenty-one.
So, should we consider adding those dollars to helping any of these entities?
I think that's, I would do that through this. I mean, you can do that at any time.
Okay.
I'd say they should pay for the BKV.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to allocate two-hundred thousand dollars to cover the architectural services for the transfer station, and the remainder of our state and local fiscal recovery funds to the HRA, which would be the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Mills?
So, we just approved BKV's architectural services not to exceed forty thousand dollars?
No, that was the reimbursals.
That's, right.
The full cost of it was- And this is the transfer station, not the LEC?
Right. I was just wondering about the discrepancy between two-hundred thousand and forty thousand. Maybe, yeah, thank you, the receivables are different than the full architectural services. Thank you.
Other discussion or questions?
Do we know what the full architectural services is, then?
Wasn't that, isn't that the six-hundred and some thousand dollars?
Okay, yeah, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's on that.
For the, for the LEC.
LEC.
Yes, okay, thank you.
That's at least.
Six fifty-five.
Thank you.
Three twenty-one.
Right, so just to clarify, this is two-hundred thousand for the transfer station, and one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents for the HRA. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is budget discussion. And I included in the packet the adjustments that we've made since the preliminary was approved in September, and there's one more adjustment. I'll describe, I guess I should describe the adjustments since, some of them were twenty thousand cut for professional service costs, that's snow plowing, et cetera, in the Maintenance Department and the General Fund. We discussed that. The Arrowhead Regional Corrections, what they've allocated towards us for twenty twenty-five, was a cut of thirty-thousand eight-eight-two. The library expense for twenty twenty-five, adding twenty-two thousand. And some human service training expense, forty-seven eighty-three. And then, the big one in the last week was the land services fee increases, those that you approved after the public hearing. And then, Human Services made some adjustments with grants, et cetera, and so their current numbers are a slight decrease. And so, at this point, we're at eight-point-three-eight percent over last year's levy, which is a million twenty-two-thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty. So, a little bit less, a couple hundred thousand less than what we originally were.
Where's the, the Public Health and Human Services made adjustments to what we're seeing in our board packet? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know what you're seeing in the board packet. I got this yesterday from Plamen.
Okay. The revenues and the expenses different from?
Yes, slightly.
So, the expenses in our board packet show five million six-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-three. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, when you're saying the board packet, yes, what I sent, correct. Those are their new numbers.
And the revenues is two million six-hundred-and-eight-six seventy. Okay, so, this, when you said eight-point-three-eight, and I saw eight-point-four, I just didn't know. You're rounding, and that's fine. I get that. I'm just trying to make sure I'm using the same numbers you are.
Yeah, no, okay, so, correction. That does not include their adjustments.
It does not?
It does not.
Okay.
So, now, yeah, if you're keeping score, right now, they're at total expenses, that's, that is the same. The revenues. Yeah. Yeah, the expenses are five-six-five-nine-seven-four-four. Revenues are two-six-four-eight-six-zero-seven. Same use of fund balance, and the final levy right now is two million four-four-four-four-ninety-two. And that just brought it down from eight-point-four-zero to eight-point-three-eight.
So, I did some research over the last few days, and the Minnesota Department of Revenue has put out information on all of the different taxes for schools, townships, counties, et cetera, throughout the state of Minnesota. The average county levy right now, this year for twenty twenty-five preliminary levy, is six-point-four percent. The reasons for those increases really go right along with what we have discussed and talked about, and experienced, rising costs and wages, inflationary pressure, hiring needs, and that this is the last year of federal COVID relief. So, we have a target of five percent for our group, which is less than the average increase. Just to give you an idea of ranges, finally, they put in all the different levy amounts for other counties. The lowest one I could find was three percent, and then some of them, you know, are up by twenty percent. There was a big article in the Minnesota Tribune on Sunday about metro area levies. Anoka County, sixteen point nine. Dakota County, nine point nine. So, I think we are in much better shape than many of the other counties in Minnesota. So, what we want to take a look then is how do we get from our eight-point-three-eight percent down to five, our goal. And I had a discussion yesterday with people from St. Louis County and Lake County about our Boundary Waters appraisal. If you'll recall, in our initial list of things that were being added, we added eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars to our budget for the purpose of reappraisal. And because of some things that have happened, the Tyler decision, mineral estates, and the big one is school trust lands that are being acquired by the U.S. for service, both St. Louis County and Lake County are not putting in money for reappraisal until next year. We decided we would be a team in this. And I know Commissioner Starley, you heard a little bit about this from one of the commissioners, Ashley Grum from St. Louis County, maybe- Ashley Grum from St. Louis County, maybe share what you heard at your meeting.
Discussion had been with those folks that they were not going to use that money this year, they were going to put it back in their general fund or wherever they wanted to put it, just because things are still tenuous, so. Can look at it again in twenty-five, twenty-six?
So, and the information that I got is, it's not going into the budget this year, that maybe potentially there could be bids at the end of 2025, but no work or anything would be done till 2026, when we find out what's happening with this school trust land money and other things that are in motion. So, Auditor Powers, if we were to reduce that Boundary Waters Canoe Area Wilderness Appraisal Fund by eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, what would that bring our levy down to?
I would also suggest we do the sawtooth bluffs. That was another twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
Reducing that eighteen thousand nine hundred would reduce the levy to eight point two-three percent.
Okay.
And there, our overage over last year's levy would be a million three thousand nine fifty-eight.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Johnson, if you could talk a little bit about rationale related to sawtooth bluffs?
I just think that whole project is kind of far away from ever getting off the ground, and I understand that the Trail, the Parks and Trails, Trails Committee, you know, was hoping to be moving far away faster, but I think that is something in our community. When we talk about housing and we talk about our lack of space here at the courthouse for our employees, when we're talking about priorities, I would say there are other things that are a better investment for this year besides twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for a plan that is not going to happen in 2025.
Commissioner Mills, do you want to just react to that based on your work with that committee?
I think Commissioner Johnson brings up a good point. It's just that it's never gonna happen until we do the plan, and as I'm sure you all have seen, the Grand Marais Park Board got the notification that they received the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails designation as a park of significance, and that really opens up a huge amount of money for them. There is a lot of work and visioning and community engagement that needs to happen still with the sawtooth bluffs, kind of, kind of have to do it again, basically, but what the, and so this has been put off since the committee was formed, basically. And so, it, it would, there are indicators that it would get designation of significance, which would open up the funding for us, which is similar to both the city, but then also I think about other departments such as the Highway Department and how the grant funding really can help projects. And I agree, it's hard to prioritize this over housing, but it is a quality of life issue that previously the community was very supportive of. And so, trying my darndest to honor and respect that past vision, it does need updating. What was communicated, I think, in the Parks and Trails Commission is that to get the kind of expertise or just the time requirement to assist Mitch Travis on it would be, would be money well spent. And, yeah, if you pit it against housing, it clearly isn't, it doesn't compete there, but, you know, I still believe that we've got two point one five seven million in pilt dollars that we've been sitting aside just in case, and now we know that we don't need to pay that back, and we can spend that for anything, including housing, including our other capital projects, which are, which are paramount, but I don't think we need to scrape and pinch as much as, we don't need to make this difficult, and we don't need to spend all of that to reduce our levy. We can do it, we can do a chunk of it just to get us down to our target, and then we could do it again, and then we could do it again, that's how much we have. I don't want to do that, that's not a good way to operate, and we will need that money for capital, but I would like to use it to cushion and kind of off-ramp us to be able to keep our levy at that lower level. I think I would like to get below that average preliminary. I think five percent is a really good target, albeit kind of arbitrary, but I think that's a really good way to keep things stable, so. I also don't like the idea of us not budgeting for that reappraisal. I think that's, again, a lot of money potentially on the table, and we need to plan for that, and if we don't, it's gonna hit us harder later. So, it's just something, if we take little bits at a time, I think it can be really helpful. So, I think the Parks and Trails Commission has, has put a lot of faith in the board and the organization to allow for progress on projects, and there have been some, some wins and, and, and good projects and coordination happening and building relationships with outside organizations, but this has kind of always been that keystone piece, and doesn't mean it's gonna happen, and it certainly won't happen without the funding, which comes from the designation, but that designation won't happen unless we spend on the planning for it, so, yeah, it's just kind of a circular thing. If it was me, I would, I would vote to keep it in, I understand why others would not want to.
Commissioner White?
What would you recommend for another way to get the levy down then if we do not do that with the sawtooth, if we do not eliminate the sawtooth bluffs?
With our pilt dollars, that's what I'm saying.
So, we talk about quality of life, the sawtooth, so the pilt dollars are like a gift almost, I mean, it's well deserved, but we have, we need to get the levy down because this will be impacting many people in our community right now, immediately, next year when they have to pay their taxes. So, I just, it, I feel uneasy spending savings account money to do our operating expenses because you don't, next year, what's gonna happen next year, like, what happens next year? So, we just keep spending until the pilt money's gone?
Well, that's what I say in the offering thing, it's similar to what we did with.
Tapering.
Yeah, similar to what we did with the ARPA dollars for the wage study, the comp study increases, is we had these ARPA dollars and we used that, including parts with the levy, to try to incorporate that into the levy, it's just a, kind of a smoother transition versus just using it all at once or, or using none of it, right? So, it's, it's almost like use some of it, keep some of it, and just keep tapering.
So, with our off-ramps, are we heading to a time where we can be pretty certain that we'll always be around five percent?
It's always the intention, but certainty is.
I will say, this board has changed how we approach budgeting, and because we've had some targets, we've talked about that history of what we've had for a levy, and that we know it's not healthy to go to a zero, I think we are on the right track. I feel really good about the fact that we know we need to have funds that we're utilizing so we can make progress and so we can plan for the future. And so, I feel comfortable, and I'm not stating about sawtooth blush necessarily, but using some of our pilt dollars, that's what they're for, it's payment in lieu of taxes, property taxes we would be getting if we didn't have the Boundary Waters. And so, let's use some of those funds to offset our levy. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Well, I like buckets. So, Brady, in our bucket for the pilt, what, what do we have? What's the amount we have in pilt?
Yeah, two, two point one five seven million.
One five seven, okay. And general fund?
Well, that's in the general fund.
Okay, so that's all together?
Yeah.
We had, going on memory now, we had in excess of our seventy-five percent of unreserved funds, we were in excess of four million above that, seventy-five percent at the end of So, we're, that includes the two point one five seven, so that plus another, you know, one point eight, one point nine.
Two point, two point, almost, almost one, two point one. There's four point two seven.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not looking at it, yes.
But it does move, right? It's always moving.
Right.
But that's what it was.
It's always moving.
Last time.
Yeah.
So, we're at eight point two three. What does it take to get us down out of pilt? What does it take to get us down to five? Four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Four hundred and fifty. And realize that if you use four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars today for this year, and these are ongoing expenses that increase, you'll have less. It's going to be a bigger amount next time and a bigger amount next time, it just, and this is where I kept saying, I want to see the financial management plan, and what if we decide, well, we know, we've agreed to build this five to seven million dollar building, and we have another one we're thinking about, and we have not even factored that into our financial management plan. That's what I'm nervous about, that you're tying your hands because you don't, you want to give everything now and not say no, when we, we keep talking about our needs as a government agency for space. Well, what is more important, space or sawtooth buffs plan or a BWC reappraisal? I'm not saying they're not important, but when you have to pick and choose, we have to be the ones to be able to say, not yet. Yeah, good idea, department head, I'm not saying it's not a great idea, but I'm saying not right now. We have to prioritize, that's what, why we are sitting at this table, it's our duty to do that.
And I would agree, so let's, you know, take a look at these items. So, one item brought up was the Boundary Waters appraisal. Of the Commissioners, how many people would support, and it's not eliminating a reappraisal, I want to make that really clear, this is delaying it. It's a strategy, nothing else. All right. So, how many people would support that?
I would support the delay.
And with sawtooth bluffs, how would people feel delaying that?
I would support that also.
I suggested it, so, yeah.
Are there other items that were requests for additional resources that you would want to consider?
Well, I have more, but you know what, I've already offered, so I want to give the opportunity to somebody else to speak up ahead. No?
Are there others that people feel strongly about? Commissioner Mills?
I just want to point out that two very large requests are new staff, and those are items that we have identified as pretty vital to the organization. When it comes to next year, we will not be adding, well, presumably, two more staff, and so, when we're talking about using pilt dollars, the biggest chunk is gonna be this year, and then, as I was trying to explain earlier, we can use pilt dollars again, but then include some of that or reduce the use of it by increasing levy and incorporating it into the levy is, is the strategy there, and I really do think that is looking long-term at trying to keep things level and consistent. And I think planning just always goes so far, and so that's why I, I think, you know, Commissioner Johnson has an excellent point about future buildings, that's gonna require a lot of planning, and right now, we just, it's just a shot in the dark for, for trying to plan for that, but we'll get there and, and we'll include that in future financial management plans, but any planning we can do now, any budgeting we can do now, save for the Highway Department and a new grader and another maintenance worker, you know, that's in the budget, I think that's wonderful to start working towards that, and that's how I feel about the appraisal of the Boundary Waters too, is budgeting for that is working towards that, so it's, it's a smaller burden in, at once, it's, it's a, it is taking bites at a time and really trying to work that way, and because of the substantial fund balance that we have over, I feel very comfortable doing that, especially with the pilt. That pilt decision was intentional to put that aside just in case, it wasn't just, you know, random that we got that, that was a part of that longer planning, just in case, and now that we've found that we don't need to pay it back, then we have that at our disposal, so I feel very comfortable about that, using that to get our levy down to whatever people are comfortable with, whatever's not gonna hurt the taxpayer, and then just slowly, you know, weaning ourselves off of that, which won't, I mean, if we did it year after year after year, it's almost, maybe not five years, but four years of it, but I'd like to get it down within a couple of years that we're off of that, so.
I think also, we've talked about federal pilt, keep in mind, our state pilt funds have increased by a dollar, so by thirty percent per acre, and we lobbied very hard at the legislature to make that happen, and this isn't about the 2025 budget, but for our Commissioners, it's really important when we go to St. Paul that we keep in mind what are these long-term things that we need for our county, and that we're focused on legislative issues, and that we're working together for the future of our county. So, let's get back to our current budget.
And so, and when you said that we were going to do the appraisal in conjunction with two other counties.
Correct.
And the point was to reduce the cost, I, that's reason enough at this moment in time, even though it's not probably going to be tens of thousands of dollars, but anything we can save on something that we're not going to be doing this year. I mean, if our other two partners in this have backed off for their reasons, then maybe we just all hold to see what next year brings, and if next year, if we are in a better financial situation as far as needing to levy, then we might decide we should go, go forward on our own.
So, I hope we keep the team approach because fighting the federal government, County versus federal government, will be a challenge.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
I, I respect that, it's just that I believe Lake County doesn't have that foresight. They're, they're doing what I'm afraid we're gonna do and just kind of kicking it down the road, but if we budget for it now, it's gonna be less of a pain in the future, so. But you might be right, that, maybe that's the way to go, I just, I would rather incrementally, you know, save for it instead of, I forget what the total, the total cost was gonna be and what our total contribution was gonna be, but if, if it was over five years or whatever, then if we, we don't budget for it, it's gonna be over four years.
It'll be fifty-seven thousand dollars over two years.
Okay.
And that was our share?
That would be our share.
Instead of three years.
Instead of three years. Instead of three years.
So that's, you know, $27,000 next year, instead of $18,000 this year, and next year, and the year after. So that's kind of where I'm like, I think it makes sense to, to take little bites at a time, and we do have the PILT to do it. This doesn't have to be a painful thing for taxpayers. We can make this as hard or as difficult as we want, and I'm just trying to make it as smooth as we can.
Adam Chair, so with my scribbles. Okay, put, let's say, put 18.9 in there, and then take out 25.5. Where are we?
29.5.
29, yeah. 29.5. Keep 18, subtract 25, 29.5.
I'm going to turn to Brady.
It's a small move, I know.
So that gets us to 8.14%, taking out the 29.5.
14, we're getting closer. So do we take the rest out of PILT? Anything else on the list? Highway, we want to agree with that?
I feel pretty strongly about keeping all our other items.
I'll stumble through. No. I had asked about the HR position, as far as we're at 1 and 1/2, and what if we did it to 2? What would we be missing? Is, are there contracts out there? I'm looking for alternatives here, and I just am not the type of person that just doesn't try to evaluate things, so. I, I had asked that question before. I haven't heard anything. It's no disrespect to our HR department, but I think when I'm asking, what is it that isn't getting done, and can we contract that out like we did with, are other things that we needed help on? I'm asking the question again publicly.
Yeah, I apologize. I did reach out to Brady. He provided me some information, and I, I didn't pass that along to you yet, so I apologize for that. That's on me. Brady did share that the, the HR analysis is complicated by a little bit by the fact that it's a current half FTE, does not get health insurance. And so when you move from a half-time FTE to a full-time, or, yeah, a half FTE to a FTE, there's, you assume the, the worst-case costs with the insurance and the family plan, exactly, all, all that information. Anyway, jump to the end, there's a savings if you went from a half-time to just two FTE instead of two and a half, a savings of $43,558. I would.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I would add that Allison Plummer, our HR director, has shared publicly in a meeting before, that the current person sitting in that half-time role has expressed, they have no desire to become a full-time person.
I understand that.
And so they're, just, so the whole board has that to consider and publicly as well.
And I want to respect that. But the alternative could be, we hire another half-time person then. Also, I'm ju, I mean it just because, I just think we need to look at all options and choose the best one, and that's why I want to make sure I have all the information of what those options might be. So thank you for that number. And when you compare the size of our departments, and that's what, why I kind of needed more information, talking to other commissioners from other counties, other HR departments, and right sizing than our number of employees, this has come up on more than one group, about talking about, what do we need, what do we have, what do we need, where do we want to go? And I don't think that always just adding another person is the answer. Sometimes we need to look at our structure and division of duties, and make sure that we are doing it in the most efficient and effective way. I'm not going to be here, so go ahead.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I think, I think we do that, and I think our previous administrator did that, and I think that was also done through our strategic planning group. And whenever there's a turnover, we, we look at our structure. One of the things I think we should keep in mind is the cost of turnover as well. Losing a half-time position, and, and so what it was recommended to us was a full-time position. I don't know all the ins and outs of that recommendation, but I know it is something that is very strongly felt, or was very strongly felt by our previous administrator, as well as our HR director. We've had two HR directors leave due to burnout, and, and I want to prevent that happening If we lost a half-time person and then hired a full-time person, there is a cost associated with that, just with onboarding, efficiency, training, and institutional knowledge. And so it's, I see it as a really helpful step to keep a half-time, and then get that needed support, because we retain that knowledge and, and that experience, and, you know, training capability, basically. And I think that would be a savings, different than, than turnover. But I don't know that, I'm not an HR specialist or professional, but that's just my understanding of, of how, how it all fits together. Having that overlap, I think, is, is pretty key.
Looking at the cost of that change in HR, it's about the same as if we were to eliminate the boundary waters reappraisal and sawtooth bluffs. And so if I were saying staff or these two particular programs, I would say I'd put my money on staff. Based in particular on, this is HR, we've lost two people, and it's been maybe, it's stated, been stated for years and years, that they are so overworked and they need another staff person.
The thing I just don't understand is why we're overlooking the, the PILT as much as we are, because it's, we can do it all. We don't have to make these hard decisions. We can try to make our long-term planning happen and realized, instead of just wishing we could. We're in an extremely good position, and our financial consultants say as much. And again, to Commissioner Johnson's point, this is not including some large capital projects, but they are aware of those. Maybe they haven't put them into the calculations necessarily, but they give me confidence that we can do this and those down the road, which is, again, requires that planning, it requires investment now, and with no hurt to, to taxpayers on, on the levy. And it's not sustainable, but step by step, incorporating that and, and off-ramping, I think has, has been demonstrated to work pretty well, and, and if we keep, keep doing that, it's just, it seems, it seems like we should, we should take opportunities like this to, to get what we need to get done. I, I really dislike just putting things off because of principles. I, I think it's very practical to use this and get our levy down to whatever number of people are comfortable with. Like, basically cutting, cutting the planning for sawtooth bluffs, and cutting the budgeting for the reappraisal, more or less just doesn't spend the PILT.
It, it delays spending the PILT.
Right. And so it's like, well, we have the money from the PILT, so, and we really, you know, the money involved with that reappraisal, the potential is quite large, as far as the return. And, and I would argue the same thing is true with that sawtooth plus planning, like the money for those, those legacy projects are quite substantial, that we can get from the state, which the voters just approved again, so. It's opportunities, just if we're going to, if we're going to take them, if we're going to do it, or, or we're going to delay. I, people criticize government oftentimes for not getting anything done, or being too slow, and that's, this is an opportunity for us to make forward progress and to get things done, so.
Commissioner White, you had your hand up.
As far as the strategic planning, Commissioner Johnson and I were on that committee, and when we were going through this, looking at transparency, and, and who's going to do what, HR came up a lot, having a lot of responsibilities. And there were placeholders that were put in at that moment in time, like, how much do we think this will take? Now Administrator Rowan was in that, in, on that committee also. And so those were like, in my mind, those were like guestimates as what we would need. Now, what former Administrator Yorki's thinking was, how he, he landed on a need for one full new person, so we'd have a department with two and a half employees, we don't know what that is. And I, I question, I don't have an, it's not a criticism of our HR department, but if, and to your statement, Commissioner Mills, about not losing the knowledge of an existing employee, our half-time employee, with Commissioner Johnson suggesting, maybe we hire a half-time, another half-time employee, bringing that department total up to two, and there might be people that, people, someone that would be interested in a half-time stressful job, instead of a full-time stressful job, we will not know that until. But even Commissioner Johnson stating that in other counties, I mean, not just other counties, do we know that we are right-sized in the number of employees in each of our departments for the amount, number of people that require services of our government? How do we find that out? Should we find that out? You know, we, we know how, with law enforcement, that seems like kind of, you know, it's a geographic thing, and you can, how many arrests and how many problems there are, and, but as far as the other, I mean, does, does the auditor's office have the right number of people? Are they, should they have another person? Or, I'm not suggesting that there should be fewer people, but are they, is burnout because they are overworked? And why are some of our employees overworked? Because there aren't enough people to help do the work? And how do we get a definitive answer on that? Is there a, oh, I don't know.
There's standards.
Is there not a, like, here we go, I'll, the phone will ring now? How about an outside consultant, who does this? Yeah, I know, 218-275-9353, give me a call. But someone had, that actually is in, they can look at what we do in this county with 5,000 people, 600 are on the reservation, and do not, 602 people reside on, in the sovereign nation of Grand Portage. So, and they are not part of the taxpaying base for property taxes, that's all. Though we are available and do work with Grand Portage, and we provide services whenever requested, needed, however, we can do that. So it is all part of 5,602 people that live in Cook County, or whatever the number is these days. So perhaps someone from the outside world who deals with all sorts of county-sized governments could tell us, where are we going wrong? Or aren't we going wrong? Are we just, are we just a, a training ground for people to come here for a while and then quit after a year or two, for them to then go to another area where they have movie theaters and shopping malls? I mean, I don't know, or they haven't, they have more, more specifically, they have an opportunity for growth in their field, which is a real problem. I can see that in this community.
I feel like we do have opportunities, and we have employees who have stayed here for a long time, or have moved here recently, who are committed to this community. So I would disagree that we're a training ground. Commissioner Mills?
Um, there are, there are standards for all the departments and all the positions, and you referenced the Sheriff's Department, and that is, you're right, based on geography, as well as population and arrests. For public health human services, it's often based on caseload numbers, and what the state standard is for how many cases there should be. I just did a simple search now, and the first thing that came up was the, from the Society of Human Resource Management, which I guess was founded in 1948, and it says there should be 1.5 to 4.5, or there's another one that, according to AI, but according to the Society for Human Resource Management, it's 1.5 to 4.5 HR staff per 100 employees. And this is something Administrator Yorki brought up, I think, with his recommendation. And so if you take the middle of that, because I wouldn't recommend that we are on the low end, which we are currently, and we have a little bit more than 100 employees, so if you take the middle of that, it's close to 2.5. So I think that's an appropriate number, an appropriate ask, and, and that's an investment in our employees, and, and it really supports staff. So I think, I think that's a good recommendation. There's also standards for maintenance departments, and as our square footage is changing, and we're adding more space, we're already, my understanding, I think, one of our staff members said that if we were up to standards, we would have six maintenance people for, for the buildings that are being proposed. And so I think adding one more is very appropriate. We all, I think, recognize the, the demands of our maintenance department, and how they've been overburdened over the years. So it's just our willingness and ability, mind you, to invest in these ways that I think is, is what's stopping us.
Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you. I don't think you have to go outside to find out the different department heads and what their timeframe is in handling things. We already have heard from HR Plummer that her timeframe will be very limited in terms of what she can do, if it's restricted. And so we'd have to live with that, too. That we can't just say, here, do this study, or here, do this, or do that. I mean, she can have a list, but, you know, I don't think that's fair to employees, too, especially heads of departments. So I think we have to be fair in what we, in how we treat them, and one of the ways we treat them is to honor what they've asked, and I don't think it's out of line at all. So I'm going to say, okay, Commissioner Johnson, 415,000 out of our PILT.
Roughly.
Roughly.
Brady?
Brady, what's that? How does that get us down to what we want?
I come up with a different number, so I'm curious to hear from Auditor Powers.
Yeah, with the 29,000 and another 415, you'd get down to 4.74.
And is that the removal of sawtooth bluffs?
Yes.
And?
And another 415.
If we, if we kept sawtooth bluffs, what would it be? Five? A little over five, huh?
Uh, 4.98.
Is that reasonable to keep it in?
I hope so. I hope so. This year, it's been many years, eight years.
So if it's been eight years and the community has been, they've had input many years ago, should the community again?
Yes.
Have input before something?
So that would be part of this.
Yeah, that's part of the whole cost of it, is getting that by and getting that input and reaching out to user groups and having events to, to ask the questions, develop a plan.
Madam Chair, we do have truth or taxation on Monday night.
Tuesday.
I mean, Tuesday, so people can come then. And we only have another meeting after next week, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So at the latest, the 17th of December, we'll meet, we need to make the decision.
Correct. Well, I feel like today's discussion has been really helpful. We've identified some values that we have on our staffing. We've talked about elimination of a couple areas. But I feel very confident that with the use of pilt, regardless of what we decide in a final package about the Boundary Waters appraisal and sawtooth bluffs, I think that using our levy, I would agree with you, is an appropriate way to go. And we have several years that we can do that, to taper it off. Other thoughts? Commissioner White?
But just, but the whole idea that, I mean, Commissioner Mills has kicked the can down the road, well, we're kicking, 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 because normally, as the years go by, with inflation, costs always go up. So to think that we're going to be able to come to a magic year where costs are, we can sustain what we're doing, which we'll be doing more in three years, five years, whatever, without additional use of savings money is, that's not sensible. It, it, that doesn't make sense to me. We will always need, if we are going to try to keep the levy down for those taxpayers who don't, they are on fixed incomes. So their fixed incomes are not going to rise as fast as inflation or as fast as our levies, even at 5%. It's, it gets harder every year for them. And that's a big concern I have.
Commissioner?
I share that concern 100%. And just for reference, our new requests for resources this year were 683,000, almost 684,000. And so if you took out all of those new requests, that drops our levy down a lot. And so that's what I'm saying, presumably, we won't have these new requests next year.
Can I quote you on this for next year?
You can quote me as saying, presumably, we won't have new levy, because, you know, we know how a presumption goes. And so how we get off of the dependency of spending the pilt is not having as many new requests. And so yes, there will be costs, COLA will keep pushing things up, right? Our, our, our staffing is our number-one expense. But it's not gonna be at 8.4, and it's not gonna be at 5. And so if we can get this down artificially to 5, then we can slowly incorporate it into our operating budget. And that's exactly what we did for the comp study. And I think it went incredibly smoothly, considering how big of an increase that, that put on the levy. And, and I think we can do the same thing here. We have about the same amount of resources and a smaller cost than the comp study was. So, again, don't want to ignore the capital costs that are coming, but I do believe that we can build towards that and accommodate it. I don't wanna see levies skyrocket, or, or, I mean, of course, I don't wanna pay as much in taxes, but I think the responsible thing to do is just to try to keep that, that levy as level as, as we can. So that's my sense, that's the sense that I'm having. It's not that I, I'm discrediting the, the unsustainability of it, I'm just trying to wean ourselves off of, of the pilt.
Commissioner Johnson.
I have a question for Commissioner Mills, 'cause I, you said something, and I'm trying to understand what you were saying. Apologize if I misheard. So you said, we have $600,000 in new requests for this, in this?
Nearly 684.
And I can't find that piece of paper where that was all written down.
I just looked over.
September 5th.
I know I have it somewhere here. But are we saying we won't continue the staff training? Are we saying we're not gonna continue the future truck payments and the seasonal worker? I mean, the, yeah.
Well, so those won't be new requests, they're in there. And like I said, we're not gonna be hiring new people, but it's gonna be in there. And so we slowly wean off, much like we did, like, when we upped the wages with the comp study, it's not that we just did it for one year, it's those went up, and then we had to adjust the levy, but we were also able to use ARPA to kinda subsidize that and kinda, you know, cushion the, the cost. And so there will be ongoing, it's just not gonna have that big of an increase 'cause it's already in our budget.
And the other thing to think about is we're gonna continue to get our pilt dollars, both state and federal, it's not like they're going away. What we're doing right now is utilizing funds that Brady wisely held on to in the event that we would have to pay him back. Sorry, I'm still confused because. Well, I'm gonna recommend, I think we've had a really good discussion today. I don't think we're at a point we're ready to make a decision today or vote on anything. But let's come back at this on Tuesday again. And as you mentioned, we have our TNT meeting on Tuesday. I'm sure we'll get feedback from the community between now and Tuesday, and potentially Tuesday, we could make a decision. But the discussion, I appreciate all the effort people have put into this. Commissioner Mills?
Got my tax statement, and I don't doubt we'll have community members. There was, there was good news and there was bad news. I think the bad news outweighed the good news. So I'm, I'm expecting people to, to be here expressing their concerns.
About further commissioners?
And I would like, to the listening public, or anybody, that please contact commissioners, anyone you wanna talk to, because we all work for all of you. And then also, since we are in a position at this point where we're going to be seeking new leadership, a super, no, an administrator, someone who works for the board. If anybody in the community would like to share their impressions or their experiences with administrative, with Cook County's administrative form of government, please let super, or Administrator Rowan Watkins know, 'cause he's the one that can disseminate that information, right? You said to let. So regular people, and his number is 218-387?
3666.
3666. And we hope to hear from you, because this is, if you don't speak up, you don't have a right to complain. And you'll get no sympathy. So, that's it, I'm done.
Commissioner Mills?
I, I will still sympathize, but I think it's important that the people of their district contact their commissioner. I think that is what our structure is intended for. And that's what I would recommend if someone, that's, it's what I do recommend, if someone outside of my district contacts me. Of course, I listen and converse, but I always say, you should really talk to your commissioner. That's the most appropriate in my mind, but.
It is, it is. So, call David Mills if you live in District, what are you, 3. Commissioner Mills, if you're in District 3.
All right, any other discussions? Commissioner? I'd just like to point out, 'cause it sounded like maybe we'd be prepared at our next meeting to determine our levy. And I just wanna say, personally feel that's totally inappropriate, that we would decide a levy amount before we have our TNT meeting, which is that evening, so.
And I was, I guess, referring to decisions about line items.
Okay, but I just wanted to be clear that we are not making a decision before we hear from the public. Good clarification.
We're technically not allowed to, until after that meeting.
As in legally.
And I, I assumed it was after, at the end of the TNT, is what I assumed you're referring to. So thank you for clarifying.
So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page of what we're doing and what we're listening to.
Yeah.
And we'll kick it down the road until the next, until the next meeting on the 17th. Stay tuned.
Let's turn it over to interim Administrator Watkins to talk a little bit about some good news from MCIT.
Yeah, thank you. So on November 20th, we received an email from the Executive Director of MCIT, Minnesota Counties for Intergovernmental Trust, congratulating Cook County as their County of the Year. And so per MCIT, County of the Year sets the standard of excellence in risk management and loss control during the year. And they recognize this county, us, because of our outstanding commitment to loss control and risk management, and our aggressive efforts to educate, inform staff on techniques to mitigate exposure and its superior assistance when claims arise. So Safety Committee and, and everyone else, supervisors and everyone that's part of that loss control and risk management deserves a lot of credit. And Cook County will receive that award at, at AMC. I've suggested that Commissioner Storyly, as our voting member, be the one to receive the award on our behalf.
We can be together on it. Whoever's there.
Very good. Yeah, oftentimes, everyone goes up on stage together, so.
Perfect. Then, yeah, that's, that's the information I have there. Is there questions on that?
I just remember years ago, Headstrom Lumber Company, I mean, it's really hard to not have accidents and to stay healthy. It's a real concerted effort by everybody in the organization, all the time. And so, congratulations, everyone here in Cook County, you guys have done an incredible job. Watch, now we'll have dump truck go up the road in the snow, or, no. It's, you've, you've all done a really, it's, it's the employees that have, and the people that, the supervisors that have done this. We have not done that, David.
I haven't gotten an accident.
Right, but we haven't, we, well, I haven't either yet.
I, I participated in the Safety Committee for a while, but I am no longer on that, so I can't take the credit for this past year. Bravo.
Agreed.
Other updates?
I, yeah, I would share that we've been working with Facilities Director Brooke Lassard, as well as some other HR, or HR Director and some other Directors, BHHS, on space needs. We've had some kinda conversations and preliminary visits to some off-site locations that they're potential for, as well as looking at potentially reconfiguring some spaces within this building, kinda trying to find and target potentially underutilized space within the courthouse, and as Brooke is, you know, fresh set of eyes to the facility, and get his point of view and thoughts on that. Nothing definitive to, to share today, but just to know that it's something that we're working on and looking at. It's come before the Building Committee, and, and I think by the time the Building Committee meets again, we'll have more information to provide and share. And then, working with DDA on their, our administrator hiring process, as well as BKV, and our LEC project continues to move forward with the timeline that they've laid out for us and the meetings associated with that. Much that you're not aware of, other than that, since we've been meeting every week. But yeah, that's, that's what I have, I'd stand for any questions.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you. We'll go on to Commissioner updates. Commissioner Johnson?
Sorry, I'm looking for my notes. Where's that one? See, Highway Department, oh, HRA, we've talked about HRA, yeah, updating that. Highway Department met on Thursday, and the Onion River Road in the winter is plowed by, is privately funded through the Visit Cook County. That is no longer happening. So our Highway Department will probably get lots of phone calls about why isn't the Onion River Road plowed this winter? And it is not a county road, it is a Forest Service road. But there will be phone calls, I'm sure, it's a very busy road. So there was discussion about jurisdictions of the Onion River Road, 'cause another one was the grade is another major, it's a Forest Service road that we do plow with no reimbursement from the Forest Service, because we use it as a.
Emergency route.
Emergency route. Even though we can't use it right now, because there's a bridge out, is another story. I got the backstory on that one from there. And then, I see, oh, yeah. And then there's the North Pike Lake Road. So there was discussion about jurisdictions of roads that was a beginning discussion. And just for your awareness, in the next coming year, there will be more discussions on that topic, and you might get a phone call about why the Onion River Road isn't being plowed. Just wanna give you a heads up on that.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, Commissioner White?
Why was Visit Cook County plowing it, or paying for the plow, and now not paying for the plow?
That would be a question for Visit Cook County. I have not, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Mills?
Do you, or does anyone happen to remember how long this, so we have in our, in our new request that budget to have another piece of equipment and another employee, is that a 10-year? Is in 10 years, we're gonna be able to afford that, or I can't remember the timeframe?
It was more of a 10-year, but we talked about this, or I talked about it with, on Thursday. So there's, like I said, this is a, even though this idea has been floated since I've been on the Highway Advisory, it's becoming, talking about more now of the fact, because of some other issues with Forest Service and not having funding. So this is a case where the Forest Service owns roads, and it's not taking care of roads. And so it falls on the county to do that, and it's an unfunded mandate. I mean, I mean, in a way, that's why they should be taking care of the roads in our county, but they're not, and asking us to do it for them anyway. So that way. That's another piece of this puzzle. But so, we saw very preliminary, well, to me, it was preliminary, mapping and ideas from our Highway Department about roads that we can pick up and roads that we can let go of, because maybe we, maybe there is no reason to have that county roads. So when we're talking about overall mileage, there's a mixture there. And like I said, this is beginning discussion, so I don't want to name those things out loud now. But just wanted it to be on your radar that that's coming. Currently, if, because we already do the grade, that doesn't require another pickup truck or driver. And if we let go some of these old places that we plow, that would free up time for maybe something else. So it doesn't necessarily mean we need that, even, right, a few years. I'm, I'm saying, it's down the road, that's not necessary.
Commissioner White?
Engineer Haas had said, we've got the right amount of equipment and the right amount of employees for the roads that we have at this point in time. And it's so that they're. And it's so that they're thinking about which ones can we cast off? And there are some little tiny ones, I know. But that's the reason why, because it's not just, it's expensive. The greater the truck, the employee. And then every year, well, not every year that you have to buy the equipment, but the employee will be there, so.
Madam Chair? Commissioner Johnson, that is probably one of the most used roads in the West End.
It is.
And there had been a private plower, so are you saying he's not doing it anymore?
He is not, I was told at the Highway Advisory that Visit Cook County paid that driver and Cook County, or Visit Cook County is not making that payment this year. So I have no clue if, if maybe the resorts down there on the West End, or if somebody else is picking that up, don't, we didn't know.
Yeah.
SGSD?
Because it would be.
Well, it could be.
Yeah. It'll be a detriment to the drivers, to everybody that goes up and down that road. Now, the Forest Service did send a message, I don't see it here right now, that they were going to improve the road with gravel and a few things like that, but I don't know if it's now, well, now it's winter, in the future or whatever. But, you know, there, there is a business end of Cook County in the West End that maybe they'll have to kind of put their resources together.
Well, so it was mentioned that maybe it should be brought up at the township meetings, that they want to take this over, because it is a.
Well, we don't have any roads in Lutzen, so Schroeder, I mean, monetarily, they could support it, but yeah, that'll be good. I'll visit with, Visit Cook County on this.
What, do you, do we know what that cost was roughly?
No.
I mean, we didn't have anything to do with it.
No, I'm not going to say, because I might be wrong. I did hear, but I can't remember.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner White, your update?
Primarily, a lot of phone calls and random conversations with people who wanted to know what's happening with the cell tower on Highway sixty-one. And it wasn't on our agenda today.
It will be.
December third.
Okay.
And the Planning Commission approved it unanimously to come back.
And I was aware of that, but it was like a lot of people, like, what do you mean, you didn't, hell, you know? And it was fine, it was fine. And, and then back, I guess the primary, primary concern in this last week were the roads. From, and that was it. It was just like, it's winter coming and there's a, there's a grand plan and, and I'll, and actually for the engineer, I passed along a question and then I, because of what he was involved with, I answered essentially the same thing that we have been told, that the 2025, in the East End, the Arrowhead Trail and the old Chicago Bay Road are on the, on the calendar for upgrades and repairs. And then at that point, other smaller projects can be, like where you need tar, where you need whatever you need, those will be tacked on and they'll be able to do them.
All right, well, thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Primary meetings were the EDA, and then also, I had mentioned previously, I'd be attending the CHB Personnel Meeting. And there was some good conversation and work at the CHB Personnel, really trying to make the organization more professional and have stronger policies. There's often a lot of turnover, both because Commissioners either leave their boards or they just get reassigned to different committees, as well as we had a new director, I think that was in twenty twenty that she came on. And, and so, you know, now it's, it's gotten to the point where like, hey, it would be nice if we had some systems and structures in place regarding pay tables and that sort of thing. But so much of it is all grant funded, so that makes it really hard. But a lot of it is regular grants coming in from the state, so there is some room there. But there is going to be some turnover, some significant turnover in the organization. And it was kind of a quasi recent hire, but still that level of experience, losing that is, is going to be difficult. And then as far as the EDA is concerned, we have our new director, Heidi Crampitz, and that was her first meeting. I don't know if you all are aware, but I made a big boo-boo. I've been saying it's probably the biggest of my career thus far. And I still have two more years for sure, so I could make a bigger one yet, but I'm, my, my guard is way up now. But I wanted us as a board to understand kind of the implications of our decision to not combine the boards. And I felt that the past Director, I guess as well as Jason Hale, they're, they're exodus in, in that. And so I received permission from Teresa Bida to share a redacted version of her exit interview. And, and so I sent that out to be distributed to you all, as well as the EDA Board. And it was, my understanding, shared with you all. It was not shared with the EDA Board. And then I got a request from media for that redacted version, which was public because it was shared with you all, and could have been received through public information requests, but me being practical, I thought like, okay, I can share this. And the, the hook there is that that was published before the EDA Board saw it. And so that was a big mistake on my end. I assumed, because it had been shared with you, that it had also been shared with them, but it had not. And so there was a fair amount of frustration there. And I had been warned about that, just to be very careful with it multiple times. And I, I thought I had, but I should have double-checked that the EDA Board had received it before I sent it out to media. So, so that was kind of a hubbub. But, you know, it's been talked through. The EDA Board appreciates my apology and my acknowledgement of the mistake. I talked with Director Crampitz about it, and, and she understands as well. I also let Teresa Bida know, and she understands as well. And so I've really tried my best to make amends on, on all the fronts that I can. And just really excited to have Heidi here. She's wonderful and has the experience and is just hitting the ground running. She will be attending the Energy Transit, Energy Transition Advisory Council in person, and that is the council that works with communities such as Intack Harbor to go through this process of what comes next after those shutdowns happen. And so going to be a very strong advocate for us and, and a really, really powerful player. So, and in her, in her interviews too, she, she had some great ideas regarding that and just a lot of interest, a lot of excitement. So if you haven't had a chance to visit with her yet, I recommend it. And she is, of course, in a transition phase, working back and forth. She'll be here for board meetings and, but just figuring out housing and that, that whole game again, so. Little, little bit of challenge there, but we've, we've seen demonstrated both with, with Teresa and Jason, that we've, we can get good, good work done, but we also, good work done remotely, but we also feel strongly that we need someone in the community in Cook County to have those face-to-face meetings with business owners and community members. So that's, that's where we're working, and that's where she's, that's where she's aiming. So that's probably all to report on today.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Storey?
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, I did not receive your message, so I don't know if that went through Rowan first, and then, because I have nothing.
Oh.
So if you want to resend it so that I.
Sure, yeah, it was over a month ago now.
Yeah.
It was September twenty-first that it was sent out, I believe.
Okay.
Well, I'll double-check that, but.
Yeah.
I will send it to Rowan.
Sure.
And then, just open meeting law.
Just so I can review what you've been through.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just a little note about something exciting that ARDC is going to sponsor. They've been able to get 1.85 million in a grant from NOAA for climate challenge grants. And it's going to affect the project area from St. Louis County to Grand Portage, Lake County, Cook, Carlton. Unfortunately, the folks inland, not so much, because it's a coastal program. But they also have many grants that we'll all be looking at, especially maybe getting a grant to do study of government buildings as to, you know, their efficiency and all of that. They've hired a, a new gal, so this is a four-year project grant. And so we met Deanna Geehold, and she's excited about coming to St. Louis County and general northern Minnesota, because she's from Michigan and has lots of degrees behind her in, in climate, climatology. So I will report more later when they progress with some specific programming that maybe we'd be able to take advantage of. So that was exciting. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I had a chance to go to the Gunflint Ranger Station Open House after the last time we met that evening. And one of the primary areas of focus that they wanted to improve upon was communication. And with the burn piles that were burned along the Gunflint Trail this fall, it went much better than in previous years. And they have even better ideas for the future. They're working with Cook County Coalition of Lake Associations to get the contact information for every lake association present, and when a fire is going to occur near one of those associations, whether it be a road association, a lake association, they will be contacted, in addition to all our media information that goes out. So that was great. We had our Planning Commission meeting, and there was unanimous support of the tower down near Schroeder off of Highway sixty-one. And coming before us will also be information related to Woodland Hills proposed plat, that's an addition to Mink Ranch. I think that's the way that we would best identify that area. And then a rezoning, Van Doran rezoned was up for the Planning Commission, but the Schroeder Town Board suggested to delay that until 2025, because they are writing a new land use plan. Then for Cook County Historical Society, they didn't have a quorum unfortunately, so they couldn't take any action at their last meeting. But they had some issues with the new roof that got put on, the shingles, some of them blew off. And our facilities manager, Brooke Lassard, was down there right away, and things last Friday got replaced, all those shingles. But there'll be further examination, not only by Rhino Roofing, but looking at the company that made the shingle, GAF, and potentially a new roof put on in the spring. So they're just exploring whether it was a manufacturer's defect or what exactly happened. But anyway, I was really appreciative that Brooke, as our Facilities Director, got down there right away and dealt with it. And the Historical Society greatly appreciates that as well. We had an airport meeting last Thursday and got some feedback on the master plan from the FAA and potential projects that occur, could occur over the next twenty, twenty-five years, and some additional wind cones on the north side of the runway, additional hangers potentially for FedEx, United Parcel, for package delivery. It's becoming pretty common in remote areas that they're flying things in, so they don't have so much truck traffic. And we see all those trucks going up and down sixty-one and are aware of what that is. So a potential hangar that could be coming in for that. We talked about the fact that there is an increase in the use of drones. And our area in particular is likely to see quite a substantial increase. They can deliver packages. But for us, it is about dropping off medical supplies in the Boundary Waters, transporting people, moose surveys, I mean, there's all kinds of applications for remote areas. So our master plan is going to include charging stations for drones and advanced air mobility and movement of a fuel farm, addition of some docks down on Devil Track Lake to support seaplanes because of all the firefighting that is being done. And so it was a really good overview of feedback that the FAA gave us on all of our ideas. And what this will lead to is eventually, in the springtime, a community meeting, kind of an open house, probably here in the Cook County Commissioners Room, to talk about what those plans are like and what that vision for the future is. And then we had our Security and Safety Committee meetings earlier this week, talked about just how much better our duress alarms and fire alarms are now that things have been improved. Talked about increasing the frequency of drills and that from staff, there has been additional requests for training. So the possibility of a survey going out and looking at what types of training would you like, what do you need? And then the last thing I want to bring up is from the HRA, and this happened after Commissioner Johnson and I attended our meeting on Thursday. Friday, Anna Hamilton, as a representative of Hamilton Habitat, met with the IRR and became aware that there are some funds that are available for infrastructure. And so there's the potential for eight units in Cook County, specifically within the city of Grand Marais. A couple of those, I'm sure you're familiar with, we've talked about, about them before, down by the Homestead Building, there's two lots with very expensive hookups for sewer and water. But there's the potential for six others on some property that the county owns. So you could imagine our ballpark and our recycle center, just to the north on the east side of Fourth Street, is a parcel that we own. It's between the ball field and the Gunflint Trail. There is a lot of water there. That's not a surprise to any of us. But a wetland delineation has been done of that property, and it is likely that the HRA will be approaching the County Board about the disposition of that property to, to the HRA for potential housing use. So I'm giving you that information now. Hopefully, next Tuesday, when we meet, we'll have more information and some maps for you. Still no decision at that point, but just informational, but we will keep you informed. December fifth, Jason Hale is meeting with the IRR to get further information about the grant application and the opportunity to do this. So little update and something to look forward to. Commissioner White?
I have a question about, do you know if the Historical Society has, they received a $700,000 grant? They were going to do a building, a climate-controlled building for archives. Have they gone, done anything with this at all? Because they must be running out of time for you to do that.
That is correct. I'm, you're, you're, when you get property up there, as they did, you have a two-year period in which to build, and they have not met that two-year goal. So there is discussion about what they are going to do. Like I said, there was no quorum at the meeting. They couldn't discuss or take any action, but that will be coming in the future. And with that, we have a list of upcoming meetings through December seventeenth, which is our last business meeting of the year. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and a support to adjourn. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, I was, forgot to vote.
Is that a yea or no?
I am a yea.
All right. We have unanimous, unanimously approved to adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
One more to go. Who's counting? Who's counting?
Well.